I feel like that part should be excluded from this rezoning because it is an opportunity for the city, for future generations to enjoy that if it was maintained at this critical point. I don't have any problem with the other parts of the property being going from R, B3 to B5. That's understandable, but the wooded area is a problem. I feel like it should be resubmitted without that part of the property being rezoned. It's, if there were some access to Carrigan Lane, that would, currently it's a cul-de-sac that is very quiet. There's children playing there, there's people, children that walk to the eye-shoulder art school that use that as part of their, the way they get home. It's a, would be a very harmful thing if there was a heavy traffic allowed on that street. So I really feel like there should be some assurances, further assurances that there would not be access, primarily because they actually own that little strip of land there. So it really needs to be made clear that it, that there would not be trucks destroying the property values in that area. Okay?
Mr. Carrigan, thank you. Comment from staff?
I just wanted to clarify for the gentleman, the property frontage on Carrigan is not included in this rezoning request.
Again, thank you, Mr. Carrigan. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this rezone application? 2201, 2223, and 2260 Halls Mill Road. Okay, please take your, take your time, ma'am.
My name is Ariadne Zitzos. I live at 2381 Repole Road.
Repeat that name, please, ma'am, and your address.
Ariadne Zitzos, and I live at 2381 Repole Road, Mobile. My dislike of this rezoning is that I own the property on the creek right next to the piece that comes from the dismount area to Carrigan Drive. That would render my piece almost useless, and I object to that. I don't think they have the right to do that. There's tons of land all over the city that's already commercial that they can use. Don't take mine and ruin it. It's just that simple.
Thank you, Mrs. Zitzos. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition to this application? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing session. We'll move back to agenda item. Oh, sorry, I apologize. Thank you, Doug. Mr. Pipes, please, you have a two-minute rebuttal period. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, appreciate it. We are happy to make the assurance that Mr. Carrigan requested that we won't use the R1 piece that's down at Carrigan Drive to access the B5 piece that we're asking to be rezoned. It's not suited for truck traffic, there's no question about it. But I mean, we can make that a condition of the zoning. It would be a condition of the subdivision plat that'll get filed by Monday. But, but that's an easy, that's an easy one. That came out of a lot of comments we had at the neighborhood meeting, you know, on this as well. And as to Ms. Zitzos' comment, you know, this is, this site has been used as a trucking facility, the part that's been actively used since 1945. It's been a long time, you know, and it, you know, in this use. A lot of that area, as you saw on an earlier drawing, that's wooded, is wet, and is down in a floodplain. It, you know, it's zone B3 now, and you see how much use it's gotten out of a pretty intensive zoning. I mean, I don't know what my clients' long, long, long-term plans are, but their plan is to use it the way it's being used right now. And I imagine that wooded area is just kind of coming with the, with the transaction. But, but we're happy to make the assurance that, you know, there's no access into the body of that B5 piece from the Carrigan Drive frontage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pipes. Please accept my apology overlooking your rebuttal period. At this time, we will close the public hearing session, move back to agenda item number one. This is the holdover subdivision and rezone of 255, 257, and 259 Dogwood Drive. Again, reminder that Mr. Nichols is recused, and we still, we do have a quorum for this. The applicant was present in both meetings in agreement with the conditions listed for the subdivision, seven findings of fact for the rezone, and four listed conditions. And we did have opposition speakers as well as in print on our devices here. Any discussion among commissioners specific to water flow? Nick, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'll just add for the record of being, you know, the, we're aware there's been some challenges there in the past. We did identify in some of the post-pass rain events, a blockage that was on the drainage behind Publix. Basically, I don't think it was a hubcap or something, our public works crews had to dig down to the pipe and remove a blockage that did that. One of the bigger challenges there is that all of the neighborhoods that are south of airport boulevard, whenever they were developed, there was, there is no drainage in those neighborhoods, and all sheet flows. So from a drainage perspective, this site would actually be required to hold water back, which granted, they're just one piece of the puzzle, but they would actually improve the drainage. You know, we've told them, one, that they've got to go to a 100-year, two-year design event, which means a bigger storage, slower release, and then also not take advantage of any historical credit for previous impervious on the property. So they are going to the most extreme standards that the city can oppose from a drainage perspective. You know, that said, it is Mobile, Alabama, you know. We have very bad rain events sometimes, and even our big rain, even our big structures do get overwhelmed sometimes in acute, in acute rain events like that. But I believe what they're proposing to do and what the requirements are being placed upon them, they're doing everything that's, that's conceivably practical.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Just to Mr. Amberger, volunteer, they're doing this voluntarily. And also too, even though the, I guess, the, I guess, the layout and the design plans that we have here don't illustrate that, but there is going to be the maximum water retention on this, this area, I guess.
Yeah, that is correct. Assuming they move forward, this applicant moves forward, they'll have to work with my office with what their final design looks like. And then, you know, we look at, again, we do back up and try to look at the bigger picture of it all. But certainly in this site, you know, they'll, water that's currently sheeting across that site, they'll, they'll be, they'll be required to capture it all, run it through a retention facility. Actually have a water quality component to it before it ever ties back into the existing drainage system that's there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
And then also too, I know there was a report done, and this, this, I guess, ultimately touches you a little bit, but as far as the traffic studies are concerned, I do hear the discussion of the traffic turning in and out of this neighborhood. That's, many times, that's my way home. So, you know, I think that's something that we need to work with traffic to try to solve, you know. you know, not immediately, but, you know, if this goes through, something that we definitely need to look at.
Thank you. Any other further comments, questions from commissioners regarding this application?
Yeah, one more comment I'd like to make. There were some questions about post-construction maintenance and inspections. That is a requirement of permits done today, so any commercial site plans that have retention structures or underground retention structures, they're required to be inspected every year, reports turned in to basically to prove to the city that those, those structures are still functioning as designed and as built, you know, so safeguards or rails that are put in place today just, they weren't there 30 or 40 years ago. So, you know, we take it very serious and, but, you know, do everything we can to, you know, keep the, keep the water in the ground underneath, underneath the roads, but we are dealing with a built environment, and we just have to deal with the variables that exist today.
Any further comments from commissioners? All right, so dual application for subzone and rezone, so we'll take them separately. First, on the subdivision, entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded on the subdivision. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes. Rezone, entertain a motion. This is a District 5 rezone, again, going from R1 to buffer business B1. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations, adopting findings of facts A, C, F, and G.
Second.
We have properly moved and seconded on the rezone with findings of fact A, C, F, and G. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
There's no comment from, from the council representative. Yeah, we're good.
Again, motion on the floor, properly moved and seconded for the rezone. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the rezone passes. Agenda item number two, new subdivision, 2761, 2765 College Street, RC Washington subdivision. The applicant and his power of attorney, applicant was not present, power of attorney, Ms. Washington Walker is, stated their case for the reason for the subdivision, and is in agreement with the conditions listed. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for the subdivision passes at 2761 and 2765 College Street. Agenda item number three, subdivision at the south side of Hall Road and east of Schillinger Road North, the Williams Willow subdivision, subdivision of two lots, just under six acres. The applicant, an agent for the applicant, Mr. Palmer is, was present, is, was present, and was in agreement with the conditions listed, the 10 listed conditions. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item number four, rezone at 2201 and 2223 and 2260 Halls Mill Road. Mr. Matei is recused. We still have a quorum for this agenda item. District 3 rezone, sub, single-family R1 and B3 to a combination B5. Applicant, Mr. Pipes, is present in agreement with the findings of fact and the three listed conditions, and we did have a couple of opposition speakers, or I guess informational slash opposition speakers. Entertain a motion for the rezone in District 3.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations, adopting findings of fact C, E, F, G, and adding a condition that will not allow access to Carrigan Drive.
We have a motion that's been properly seconded with findings of fact C, E, F, and G, and a condition of access to Carrigan Drive not to be allowed.
Mr. Chair, I had the motion. Who was the second?
Oh, that was me.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. To clarify, on the subdivision, the staff had recommended to get all of the property under one legal lot of record, as long as, technically, as long as each property to be developed is a legal lot of record, which these two are, this, I'm going to call it a fragment, is coming in, they've already provided a copy of the plat to us, as long as everything has a legal lot of record, we're fine with that, and we can strike condition number one.
Okay, I'll revise my motion to that effect.
We need a second for the revision. Amended motion, properly moved and seconded, findings of fact C, E, F, and G, Carrigan Road comment, and striking condition one. Any discussion? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for rezone passes. That concludes the agenda items. We will move on to other business for the planning commission. If I could get Mr. Matei back up. This will now open the public hearing for the zoning study of the annexed areas at King's Branch Orchard Estates and Cottage Hill Corridor that was affected the city of Mobile July 25th, 2023. I'll turn it over to staff for comments on this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to give the commission an overview, and I suppose be a little redundant with the staff report, back in Ju, there was a annexation movement. Four areas were allowed to vote for annexation. Out of the four, three voted to join the city limits of Mobile, King's Branch Orchard Estates, and what is referred to as the Cottage Hill Corridor. That vote was ratified in July. When property or any area is annexed into the city, it is annexed as R1, single-family residential. The first step in putting zoning into place is to amend the comprehensive plan, incorporating the major street plan and the general land, future land use plan into the comprehensive plan. The planning commission held a public hearing and adopted the major street plan and future land use map for this area back at their meeting in October. With that in place, staff prepared a zoning study for these three areas. In preparing the zoning study, we used the comprehensive plan as a guide. What did the comp plan call for in this area? Commercial, residential, et cetera. The other thing we did is we looked at what is on the ground now, and what zoning classification is required for that use. That is not to say that every commercial use that is on the ground now has a corresponding zoning proposed. There are some areas and individual lots that may have a commercial use in place, but they're surrounding, surrounded by residential. Therefore, the recommendation is to leave it residential. The other thing that we did not do is we didn't try to project what the possible future use of these properties are. Again, our guidance in proposing this was the future land use map, the major street plan, and what's on the ground now. The planning commission at their second meeting in October called for the public hearing. We have held two community meetings. This has been on the planning commission and the map for Mobile website. We have accepted comments via email. We accepted comments via that portal, which closed last Friday, the 10th. All comments that we have received by the 10th, we have incorporated into the report. Everything, we then, as you're aware, we amended the report. We received 14 comments. Two of them were actually in support. Those are comments two and three in the amended report. We published that amended report yesterday. We also emailed all of those that commented and are requesting a zoning district different from what is proposed, so, reminding them of today's meeting so that they would have an opportunity to present their case to you and answer any questions. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, staff's available for questions, and then I would suggest go comment by comment, asking for those people to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Papas. One minute while I make a note. All right, I have a question for you, considering one of our comments on one of the properties is a commissioner. If we do intend to vote on this today, would we need to, does that commissioner need to recuse on just that one comment?
Yes, sir. What staff would recommend is if the commission does choose to vote today, or whenever they choose to vote, vote on the zoning study as submitted, and then take each comment to amend the study. So whatever comment is made by the commissioner, they could not participate on the discussion and vote on that specific comment.
All right, thank you for that point of clarification. Any, any questions from commissioners before we get started? My plan is to go into the staff report, go comment by comment, seeing if the, the comment, the person who made the comment is here, state their case on the proposed zoning, and then their request. We can have any discussion on those, and considering this is a public hearing, if they have any comments on that, that we can, we can move forward with it. Any questions or from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I have one question, so, just so I understand the process, being the newbie here, which I think we're probably all new.
It's my first time, too.
So, we're going to approve it as a whole, and come and take all these separate. I do know that there are some, some folks in the audience that would, didn't submit. Will they have the opportunity to state their case here?
Yes, it's, it's a public hearing, and, Mr. Chair, that would be at your discretion as to whether you wanted to take, go in order of comments received, and then take those who haven't commented, you know, just in general discussion, or vice versa.
We'll see how it plays out as we go along. Comment number one, the property ID, too long to mention, is proposed zone is R1, requested zoning for Mr. Ralph Neal to B3. Is Mr. Neal present, or anyone representing their firm at Endreal Estate? Are there any, any comments on that specific property from other attendees in the audience? All right. That kind of worked. Comments two and three are in agreement, proposed zoning B2, to stay as B2, and that was from Mr. Jimmy, James Grodnick and Mr. Robert Coley. Are those applicants, or excuse me, are those commenters here in the audience? All right, we'll move on to comment number four. Proposed, we have a recusal, Mr. Matei, proposed R3, requested zoning to B3, the request is made by Mr. Michael Matachiolo and Mr. Pipes. You're in, you're here and representing him?
Yes.
Or Magnolia Point?
We, we represent the owner of Magnolia Point, and it's a, it's a 35-acre site at the northwest corner of Greelot and Schillinger, at the hard corner, and it's already been developed up. Two-thirds of it, three-quarters of it is the Magnolia Point manufactured home park, and then there's also the anchor self-storage facility and the West Park Shopping Center. And so what we wanted, and we understand the staff when they did this, it's all one lot, so they, they didn't split-zone it, they gave it something, and the bulk of it would be R3 for the mobile home park. What we're asking for is that the mobile home parks stay R3, and then the self-storage and the commercial area go to B3, which is what the staff proposes to the north. That requires us to do a subdivision. We have that, we've provided the staff with a legal description and the draft of that plat. We'll be filing that subdivision application tomorrow, or certainly by Monday's deadline. The owner was happy with it all as one lot until it needed to get zoned, and now they've got to go do something to, to do this, and so, but it's, it's largely to put the zoning in compliance with the future land use map that calls this all mixed commercial corridor anyway, and to have the zoning reflect the currently built-out facilities there. And the client's happy to go through the subdivision process to make this work, so it's not a split-zone thing. We just didn't get that done before y'all got to this stage.
Thank you, Mr. Pipes. Is there anyone here to speak regarding that piece of property, or have any questions or comments regarding that piece of property? Any questions or comments from commissioners?
Yeah, question for staff, so if, say, the next meeting, they come in with a subdivision, would it be appropriate for them to come in with a subdivision and a zoning for that?
No. They actually provided to staff with their comments, the description of the property that they want zoned B3, and so when the recommendations move forward, everything will be by parcel, you know, typed out in the ordinance, but this portion will be the meets and bounds legal description. So it'll simply describe this property in terms of the zoning to B3.
Okay, so staff would be okay with that, and then the subsequent subdivision comes back that really cleans up?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll take the next five comments in bulk, hopefully the commenter or representative from his office, Mr. Michael Jones. Michael Jones? Great. So we have five comments listed. All of them really go R1 to B2, that's on comment five, and then, or B3 on comment five, and then the rest of them are R1, coming in as R1, and you're asking, or suggesting that they go to B2. Go right ahead, sir.
Mike Jones, 10405 Kearns Road. The property in question has got a loop place on the, to the west of it, and it's also got a new development that's not in the city to the right of it that's urgent care, so we feel like it was purchased to be a commercial property, so we felt like it was best suited to be a commercial property in between two other commercial properties, so.
So that's on comment five?
Yes.
All right. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Anyone in the audience? Go ahead, Kenny. It's the right, one on the right.
There we go. I actually have a comment, I do note Mr. Jones' comment here, that immediately behind the Walmart is the auto service, Fossack's Quick Loop, which, you know, our proposed zoning map shows as R1. I don't know if there was a comment received, but I did note that.
There was not.
That is an existing oil change concept.
There is a discrepancy. If you look on the future use map, that now shows it is orange, I think, so it included it with ours.
Any further? Any further on comment five? All right, comment six, this property, Mr. Jones?
Uh, the family owns the property to the south of it, the two lots to the south of it and to the, um, east and west of this property. It was all purchased to, you know, to be part of a future development. Uh, we have development on the lots, both to the west and to the east, and we've had proposals in the last two years for a commercial to be developed on it, um, that had fallen through, but, um, that was the suggestion on it. So we felt like it should be, uh, zoned the same as the other properties that we own. Kinda makes a straight line cut across it anyway. It kinda squares it off.
Any questions or comments from commissioners? Anyone in the audience on that property? Comment seven?
This, this property's, uh, we also own the property to the east of it. Uh, it is, uh, currently being used as an, as a retail outlet. So, uh, we felt like with us on another property and what it's currently being used at, that it should be, um, the same as, as what's to the east of it. It's all a hard corner. It's all one piece in our eyes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, just a quick question. I guess that front of the property that's already zoned, um, like it is, um, just that, if I, if I recall, that's a, a former home, I guess, on there?
Yes, uh, Marcy and Me's on the corner and, uh, the Cravers Restaurants to the rear of it, and then that's being used as Marcy and Me's outlet and kinda storage.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from commissioners on comment seven? Anyone in the audience on that property? Right? Two more, two more to go.
Yeah. This, this property's currently being used as a track, uh, for the school. Uh, it was purchased, uh, with us on a lot of that corridor, including the Schillinger Square just north of this. Uh, it was purchased to be developed and filled as a, as a commercial site and improved the drainage at that point, too, that runs through it. So, um, that was our future use, um, suggestion for it. It's, you know, directly across the street from the church, Cattie Corner, to a lot of commercial development. And it's a five, it's on a five lane highway, wouldn't be.
Any comments or questions from commissioners? Anyone in the audience regarding that property on Schillinger Road? And Mr. Jones, comment nine, R1 to B2?
Similar to the other, we own the development, uh, across the street. This is commercial, it's in red. And then, uh, it was purchased as three lots together that opens up on a five lane road that would not be well suited to be residential. Uh, it was purchased to be commercial development on that corner.
Any questions or comments from commissioners? Anyone in the audience regarding that comment and that piece of property at Schillinger Road and Marty Drive? All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Comment number 10, uh, Steve Kenny? Mr. Kenny in the audience? This is a request from, uh, proposed zoning of B2 to B3. I'll let commissioners read Mr. Kenny's comment on number 10. What's that? Well, I'll give you enough, uh, everyone have enough time to read that. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Anyone in the audience have any questions about that piece of property? All right, we'll move on. Comment number 11 from Mr. Kevin Frost. Proposed zoning of R1, requesting zoning of B2. This fronts Dawes Road. Mr. Frost, present? Yes, sir. Any comments in addition to the comment? Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience on that piece of property? Anyone, any questions or comments from commissioners on that piece of property going from R1 to B2? All right. Comment number 12. Mr. Nichols is recused. You can go to the podium if you'd like to explain anything. Requesting or proposed zoning of R1 to go to requested zoning of B3.
John Valles, 2600 Dolphin Street, Mobile, Alabama. I'm here representing the owners of this property at the, near the intersection of Cottage Hill and McFarland. This was part of the Publix development at that intersection. And I understand that the city is bringing in the two out parcels to the Publix development in as B3. And we feel like this is, this four acres should also be zoned B3 because it was part of the original development. When that subdivision, when that project was originally platted, it included actually three out parcels. The city only recognized the two that are directly in front of the Publix. But this four acre parcel to the east was also platted as part of that subdivision. It's part of the overall ECR that governs the shopping center with uses and access easements, et cetera. This four acres has access from the Publix drive that comes in off Cottage Hill Road, as well as when we were in discussions with the county for this project, the county granted us access from Cottage Hill Road, uh, about midway point for that four acres. This, the property owner also dedicated, uh, right away for the county for this project. And we've been in negotiations with various users for this property that include quick loops, car washes, quick serve restaurants and uses like that. So we feel like it was part of the original Publix development. It's recognized as an out parcel in that master declaration. All discussions with the county prior to annexation, it was contemplated to be commercial use. And again, we're in negotiations with various users for this property. So we feel like it's rightly served to be B3.
Thank you, Mr. Valles. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Go ahead, sir. Turn on the right, the right hand side button, needs to be red.
Um, Mr. Anderson, I think I can answer your question. So this was about a 50 acre development. Uh, the back, the, the 35 acres north of this four acre site was sold to D.R. Horton, and they're doing a mixed use development of single family homes as well as a small portion of townhomes. This four acres is actually gonna be buffered immediately to the north by that townhome portion. So you'll have commercial on the frontage, then you'll have a layer of townhomes. And then north of that, probably starting in line with where the Publix development is from that point, north wrapping the shopping center to the west is all gonna be single family, and that's currently under construction. McFarland Road. So it's, yes, the Horton, the ma, the main entrance to the subdivision is off McFarland Road.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners? Anyone in the audience regarding this piece of property? Thank you, Mr. Valles. Comment number 13 from Mr. Loper. Mr. Loper in the audience? Any additional information to, this is proposed zoning B2 requested from you, uh, and, uh, to go to B3? Any additional comments there? Yeah, anything will be helpful, sir. Thank you. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Brown Loper. I, you guys talked to, I guess, my brother Coleman, he was here last month. But he had sent most of this stuff in, and the, the only thing I wanted to explain is we think it's important to go to a B3 because most of the interest that we have had from our, um, realtor has been the larger boxes, the, you know, larger box stores like the, I don't know, the, I won't, don't take the names, but folks over 60,000 square feet. And that's the biggest thing that I was, you know, really wanted to concern. And there's an adjacent, uh, piece of property that, well, it's, it's B3 right up underneath that. And to keep it all in, in one, one piece may be a, a good way to go. So I, our interest has been, the folks that have been interested in the property have been on a larger, a larger square footage than the, than the B2 designation. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from commissioners on this piece of property? From Mr. Loper? Anyone in the audience have any?
I just wanted to say, um, we did modify the future use map on this, and we, we've seen this property before.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thanks.
All right, last but not least, comment number 14. Proposed zoning of B2. And R1 is requested zoning from Mr. Mike Daniels to go to B3 or B4. Ms. Daniels?
Mike Daniels, uh, B.C. Daniels, 5617 Cottage Hill Road. And, uh, it says comment 14, Ray Coleman Loper, but it should be B.C. Daniels, I think, or Mike Daniels.
That's what I have on my report here.
That, that wasn't what I was looking at on the screen. That's why I brought that up. And, uh, it's currently the property that you're looking at or whatever, as you can see on the Google Maps, it's already being operated as a boat and RV storage facility and has been, I know since, uh, probably at least 2017, owned the property since 2013 with the intent to do what we've been doing out there. I actually have, uh, most of the property that you see vacant. I have some type of land disturbance permit with the county since July. We have already started some work, in fact, uh, um, out there, and I've kinda held up because I wanted to see where we're going with this. But, uh, and I do have like eight buildings that are already been permitted in the county. So prior to all that, to this annexation. And, uh, anyway, so, uh, to be by right, I need a B3. And of course, I think the staff recommendations was B2 on some of that property and then some of it R1. So, um, I think they gave the numbers for what I need B3 for.
Any questions or comments from commissioners on that piece of property?
Uh, yes, sir. And just for clarification, Mr. Daniels, um, you've operated out of, uh, kinda just a timeframe on how long you, you've had this, Kevin? You've operated here?
Yeah, so it's been operating since 2017, uh, as a boat and RV storage. Um, of course, the county has put in a traffic circle since that time. And just to the north of us is a public storage. It was called Dawes Storeall, but it's public storage now. It operates a facility there. And, uh, I'm not sure if some of the other people, I think that's got some R zoning. I know they bought it as commercial pieces and I didn't see where they asked for a change. Uh, the one thing I will point out is that there's a three, four lots that we own to the, uh, northeast of that and, uh, adjacent to a playground. And we, we dedicated those to residential, so I'm not asking for those to be rezoned, uh, at this time. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and build residential houses, which, uh, I think all four had been permitted in the county prior to annexation.
Is there one in the audience, uh, that would like to have any comments towards this piece of property? Intersection of Dawes Road and Clark Road. Any further questions or comments from commissioners for Mr. Daniels? All right, seeing none, that will, um, come to an end, the comments. Um, I see no reason to delay this any further since, uh, we are, all comments were, were accepted and we have good discussion on all of them. Ms. Papas?
The one thing I would suggest is, uh, seeing if anyone in the audience had general comments on this study beyond the specific ones you have before you.
I'll go ahead and open that up. Does anyone here in the audience have any comments towards this study of the annexed areas of Kings Branch, Orchard Estates and Cottage Hill Corridor? Going once? All right. Um, we will need to, uh...
Mr. Chair, I, I think there was one person that...
Is there?
That, that, that would be...
That pertains, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Thank you, Josh. Um, if you have questions, this is the time to bring them up. And remember to state your name and address for the record. Bring that microphone down a little bit. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Susan Kaito, and I have property on Schillinger Road South, and it's commercial. It's been commercial since 2003, and I'm just, I've had lease, people leasing it since 2003, which it was a beauty salon and it was a retail and it was a car lot. And I'm just hoping to keep it as B2. I've had, um...
Do you have the address?
7805 Cherry Drive, but it faces Schillinger's.
Give them just a second. Keep on making comments. They are gonna go look up that property.
I've been paying taxes on it. I've had commercial insurance on it since 2003, and I'm just hoping to keep it that way because I've had a, my last person trying to rent it, y'all turned them down. So I was just trying, it was Callahan, Matt Callahan and his dad. So I was just trying to keep it B2. So...
And then, uh, tell us what's, what's a budding in.
What's around it?
What's your, what's your neighbors look like there?
Um, well, there's a car lot next to me. And then that whole street is just, you know, after that, it's just land. And then there's, uh, RSA Insurance Company on the other side of me, well, a few houses down, and, um, a chiropractor office. So, I mean, I just, I'm just trying to keep it like that because that's, you know, my income. I have state, you know, he got the state Alabama, uh, certificate, and then he got, you know, the fire department came out and checked it. I've had all the neighbors when I first started...
Are, are you on the corner of Cherry Drive and Schillinger's Road? Is that where you're?
Schillinger's and Cherry, I'm on that corner. It's an acre, I think it's, believe it's an acre.
We get a red dot on there? Anybody down there? Margaret?
Yeah. It's on the corner.
Okay. Is there any way staff to determine?
And it's always been small business, you know, a small business, center of residential structure, correct? Correct. But I've had all the neighbors when, 2003, to make it commercial for my hair salon. It's got a big blue awning on the front.
What they're trying to determine is what it's coming in as?
It's proposed for R1, uh...
At this time, ma'am, would you like to make a comment for that proposed R1?
I would like to make it B2, which was, I thought it was B2, I thought it was grandfathered in because every time I went to get the license and they never complained or anything. This is the first year after the city got it, I've had something wrong. And I've had, I have all my insurance, all my revenue, everything.
So we'll accept that as comment number 15, commissioners? As a proposed zone R1, uh, requested from the property owner to be B2? Any questions or comments from commissioners on that comment? Other than our lady at the podium, is anyone in the audience have any questions on comment 15? Going from R1, proposed R1 to, uh, requested B2? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, that now concludes comment periods unless there's anyone else in the audience that has something towards another piece of property that they own in the annexed areas. All right, Ms. Papas, we'll now entertain a motion for this public hearing and the zoning amendments for the annexed areas.
I'll make a motion.
When you, Ms. Papas, you wanna go comment by comment?
I think we need to have a vote on the maps in their entirety as proposed. Take a vote on that and then take each comment as an amendment.
And vote each separate one?
Please.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on the map in its entirety for Kings Branch Orchard Estates and Cottage Hill Corridor.
I'll make a motion. Second?
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Comment one, R1 to B3? Comment one, R1 to B3. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for comment one to go from R1 to B3 passes. Comments two and three remain, remain B2, no action needed. Comment four. Any recusals, please step away. Rezone from R3 to B3. Mr. Pipes gave us explanation as to the justification behind that.
And if staff could clarify, they provided the legal description for the B3, so it would just be this portion for B3, the remainder would be R3.
I'll make that motion.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Comment five, Mr. Michael Jones requesting B2 or B3 from R1. Question for Mr. Jones, did we clarify which one would be more advantageous for you and your operation?
Stuff we own north of it, B2, that's why I put it either. But if y'all wanted to do them all B3 like Walmart, that would follow me. I didn't know what the city would want to do, if they want to keep that all together with Walmart and B3. Or we own the stuff north of it, so we were following it being B2.
It's on a residential street, so I, B2 would probably be more apt.
A motion determined B2.
Properly moved and seconded, R1 to B2.
Hold, hold please, sorry. Do you want to include the property to the west as well? I understand that, but you can, yes, I'm giving that.
If it makes sense at our level, yes.
Okay, so I'm sorry, who did I? Yes, B2 would work. And the motion was from Mr. Woods and the second from Mr. Anderson. And that is for both. Thank you, for B2.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Comment six, R1 to B2, Mr. Jones, again, gave explanation towards that effort. Entertain a motion?
Motion moved to B2, second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Comment seven, R1 to B2, Mr. Jones explained towards that effort.
I'll make the motion.
Properly moved and seconded, R1 to B2, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Comment number eight, R1 to B2.
I'll make the motion, second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Final comment from Mr. Michael Jones, R1 to B2. Comment nine.
I'll make this motion, too.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Comment 10. Mr. Steve Kenny requesting, coming in as B2, would like to change it to B3.
I'm going to make the motion for it to remain as B2 like the rest of the subdivision. Yeah, okay. Okay. The motion. Gotcha.
Number 11, comment 11, Kevin Frost requesting R1 to B2. Entertain a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Comment 12, Mr. Nichols is recused, requesting R1 to come to B3. Mr. Valas was present, gave explanation towards that effort.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, R1 to R3. Comment 13. Mr. Loper here and representing the owners, came, coming in as B2, requesting to go to B3.
I'll make a motion, second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Comment number 14, Mr. Daniels, coming in as B2, requesting B3 or B4.
B4 is completely inappropriate outside the downtown, midtown area.
Thank you, staff.
I'm, I'll make a motion to designate it B3, second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for B2 to B3. Final comment made publicly on 15, I don't have the parcel. Coming in as R1 requesting B2 as such for a long time. Entertain a motion?
I thought we had, did we have an address, 7805?
The address is 7805 Terry Drive. It's one lot, less than a half acre.
Yeah, I'll make that motion for it to come in as a B2.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
I have one comment. This kind of lines up with the oil change place on the, the property on Cottage Hill, right there at the Iberville. There's a car lot to the south. Are we, are we rezoning that as well? Or are we, are we looking at that as well for rezoning? Because that would be the same situation, that's a car lot that's in the R1 zoning.
Yeah, and I also think there's an insurance agency next to that, too, I think.
So what?
I think there's like a car lot and insurance agency next to that, too.
Yeah, there's, so would this fall under the, a similar situation where we would change that one as well? Because it's already a commercial use, right?
Okay. I guess I'm not keeping up. I thought we were, we, we've gone through one through 14. We're on Terry Drive, which was the lady at the end. It's one, it's one lot, 7805 Terry Drive, and she's requesting B2. So what was your, your, I want to make sure I answer your question, and I haven't tracked with you.
In the, in the case of the property on Cottage Hill Road that was on the Iberville, there was an oil change place between the two that was zoned R1, and we voted to, he made the motion to bring that in.
Yes, sir.
Right. So would, would the same apply here because we have a car lot that's also zoned R1 that, that abuts this? Are we doing a similar thing for the car lot? I mean, how far are we taking that?
Well...
Because what's, what's going to happen is if that, if that happens, you're going to have a business zoned surrounded by R1.
Understand what you're saying. I would, I would say this. We have a specific address for her site in question. Now, bear in mind, her site, the car lot to the south, and I'm sure there are several more in the annexed areas where ultimately their use can be allowed to continue if they're legal nonconforming. And they can come in and submit rezoning applications. But I think the commission in those instances needs to have more information, see more of what is actually around there before they, before making a recommendation. Going back to the Cottage Hill and DeIberville site, you've got a good clear shot of exactly what's going on there. The other, the Schillinger and Terry, you have what she's described to you. And, you know, we have some information that indicates there's been commercial uses there. But I kind of hate to nebulously talk about additional properties. I understand what you're saying, but that's our concern.
Makes sense.
Four, can we go back to 14, Mr. Daniels? Want to make sure there was no confusion there. What was your concern, Mike? Come, come to the podium, please, so we can hear you.
So I just want to clarify, the wording is, it's not just B2 that, so originally all that that you see in the highlighted orange and then the white included in that or that area, all of that was actually, part of that is showing up on their map, the second map as R1. But I was asking for all of that to be B3, I just wanted to clarify that because it says B2 up there, proposed zoning and R1. But then I just want to make sure that all of those are included in that, and that's, if y'all understood it that way.
These are the parcel numbers that you put your comment on, and you requested B3.
Okay.
So everything on the zoning map outlined in the dark, black line, is recommended for B3.
Thank you, Ma.
You're welcome.
We go to 14? Coming back to 15, we have a motion and a second, I do believe. Do you have that recorded, Margaret?
I have a motion for B2 for 7805 Terry Drive for Mr. Amberger, seconded by Mr. Dorsey.
All in.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Any further business, Ms. Pappas? Filing deadline for November 20th, our next meeting is December 7th, and then the final one is December...